Are you calling for order?
It's my pleasure to introduce you to a familiar face. Danny Towns, a director of the library and also the director of our assessment committee and also co-chair our middle states self-study. And he's here for his annual visit to the board to talk about our annual assessment.
Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. Blake Rick said, I just want to give you an update on the assessment activities over the past academic year and give you a little idea of where we're heading in the assessment world in this year, in the 2324 academic year. So just some notes for, you know, this past year, the 2223 assessment year. New SUNY general education framework. So this new SUNY general education framework is in effect for most programs at the two year level, the associate level as of September 2023. And I think there's a couple of the ones, AOS programs that it becomes effective for in September 2024. So academic departments or divisions, academic departments spent last year, you know, making sure that they had a grip on the general education outcomes and getting them infused into courses, programs and the like. New institutional learning outcomes, they also took effect in September 2023. The committee, different constituent groups on campus worked in 2223 to make sure those institutional learning outcomes were acceptable to folks on campus. And then you may or may not recall that they came to this group in the summertime, I want to say June 2023, after they were approved by the shared governance bodies on campus. Middle States self-study continues. I also co-chair the middle states committee. So that work continues through our site visit, which will be sometime in the spring of 2025. And I'll talk a little bit more about middle states towards the end of my presentation. And then, of course, as always, we continue to document mature assessment. So doing an assessment and doing that assessment again in the academic realm, that happens at least twice in a six-year cycle. But again, to sustain assessment and to show assessment as continuing to evolve on campus. This slide is just a reminder of assessment on campus. This is not a top-down type of assessment culture that we have here. And in reality, what this is, is course level assessments kind of form the foundation of assessment here at FM. We do assessment at the program, department and division level as well. And then, of course, at the institution level. And all at all three of those levels on the period, we have both learning outcomes and we also assess effectiveness. So I'll give some examples of assessment done this year on all three of those levels, beginning with the course level. So at the course level, general education is assessed. This year, we assessed two SUNY requirements, the number four being American history, number nine, which we're looking at here, foreign language. Going to take these two kind of out of order and start with number nine first. So foreign language assessed in the humanities division in 2223. In one section of French, two sections of Spanish 201 and one section of Spanish 202. Assessment measures, including test, presentation, rubrics, et cetera. These were accessed, these classes were in one traditional type delivery method here on campus. And then three colleges in the high schools sections totaling 24 students. There's two criteria in this, in this requirement, basic proficiency of a foreign language in knowledge of features and cultures associated with the language that they're studying. The results of this assessment with those 24 students, that all students either exceeded or met the outcome, so that's obviously 100%. And then just some action plans, some feedback from the instructors in those courses on what their next steps will be, what they will do to continually, you know, make sure that their students exceed and/or meet the standard. The second general education assessment done at the course level, like I said, American history, this one's got a little bit more data to it. Three different outcomes with this general education requirement that you can see at the top of the slide, assessing history 105 and history 106. And again, just some of the measurements, some of those typical ones that you would come to expect, test quizzes, essay questions, research papers. The goal here was for three quarters, 75% of the students to meet or exceed the standard. And you can see that the results are fairly close to that 75% for that first outcome met, second one slightly below at 72%, and then the third outcome slightly exceeding at 73%. All three areas or all three outcomes showing slight decreases from the last time that they were assessed, according to the faculty member that conducted these assessments in these history classes. Some of these, like the second, the second outcome, you know, 92% in 2001, but that was completely online. And the last time that that assessment was actually done in traditional courses was back in 2016, and that was 60%. So that looks like, it looks like a decrease, a really dramatic decrease from 2001, but in fact, it's actually an increase from the last time this was assessed in person in 2016. And then action plan, including to continue to incorporate publisher providing quizzes features and more emphasis drawing connections between the past and the present as far as these history courses go. At the department level, this is usually where effectiveness is assessed. So effectiveness initiatives and/or services that different departments may be undertaking. So just to give you some year-over-year, when I was up here last year at this time, we were talking about a piloted submission form for academic and student affair assessments. Want to make sure that form was aligned to strategic plans. Eight departments used that form in the pilot. So this year, we had 12 departments actually use the form, so there was an expansion of the use of that form. And actually, 14 assessments submitted, C-Step submitted three separate assessments. And so speaking of C-Step, one of their assessments this year, one of their goals was this year was to expand the availability, available opportunities for STEP or C-Step beyond the greater Amsterdam School District, the one, the primary district that the college works with or C-Step works with. You can see that their goal was ambitious. They are attempting to hit several different goals in the college's strategic plan, partnerships, equitable experience, enrollment management and transformation of the college. So an ambitious plan here. Tying it to the institutional learning outcomes, okay? And again, these are the older, the older set of institutional learning outcomes. They wanted to establish memorandums of understanding with participating school districts and enroll more eligible students in their program. So what they actually did is they had two MOUs established with two MOUs pending as we entered the 2324 academic year. They did manage to enroll some students from Wheelerville, small district, right? And then a few more students in from the Johnstown School District, 77 total from Amsterdam. So a slight increase, a very slight increase in actual enrollment in the program. Again, you know, they're extending, this is a benchmark, so this is a new initiative that they, that they had undertaken. So they wanted to expand the program, like I said, beyond Amsterdam. And then gradually increase MOUs with other area school districts, which we can see them doing and attempting to do as they move forward. And continuing outreach and recruitment efforts through the colleges surrounding school districts. So would this be in the new initiative, you know, making people in those school districts aware that this program exists and that they can partner with a program here at the college to, you know, get these students into a science and technology entry level program. Trio, another ambitious goal here. So what they wanted to do was have all faculty members physically, physically come over to the trio area, which is located in the conference and near the library where I work, and be able to communicate with students firsthand of the benefits of the program. So be having those faculty members being able to advocate to students that may be eligible for the trio program. Connections to the strategic plan, specifically in the partnerships area and the institutional learning outcomes, demonstrating critical thinking, problem solving and creativity. What they wanted, like we said, was to get these divisions to attend these information sessions. And in fact, all faculty members did attend during their division meetings in 2223. So the faculty members really bought into being able to or being willing to participate and potentially help advocate for students to join this program. Again, another new initiative, so this is a benchmark. Okay, this is another prime candidate for, you heard me mention mature assessment a little while ago, as far as the culture of assessment on campus here. So, you know, go back to this next year or the year later and see what happened. You know, did, did the numbers increase in trio as far as applications and or intake or enrollment? And then their action plan would be to stay connected with those faculty members, continue to offer, which they have done in the past, classroom presentations and get the applications to those faculty members. So the faculty members again can advocate for, for the program on, on both the program participants and the students behalf. The institutional level, institutional learning outcomes, and then, of course, the middle state self-study. The new institutional outcomes, of which there are five on the right-hand side of this slide, again, these took effect in September of this year. The old ILOs about 10 years old, so it was certainly a time, time to look at these, assess these, make some changes as necessary. We had four, like I said, we're moving to three different institutional learning outcomes. And this year, divisions are gathering information on the first new ILO. And the assessment of the new ILO really begins in 202425, as far as the assessment committee is concerned, there'll be a subcommittee. We will look at that data and begin to make some assessments as it concerns or as it relates to institutional learning outcome number one. Middle State self-study. So basically where we are at now, the working groups are gathering evidence and submitting progress reports. And in fact, that has really just come to an end in here in December. Like I said, I'm a co-chair with a faculty member, Ruth Scott, who some of you may or may not know, is a math professor here. The working groups are beginning to move from those progress reports. So what are you finding? What are you gathering? Where are, where, you know, show us that you're moving through this process. They'll be moving into an outlining in a drafting stage over to the beginning of 2024 into February of 2024. The co-chairs, Ruth and I, are working with working group chairs, of which there's seven, identifying any gaps or issues that they may have and helping them resolve some of those concerns. Who do I ask for information? Does this information exist? Things like that. And then, again, the co-chairs, like I'm doing tonight, we're spending time communicating this progress to campus groups. So to the college assembly, the division chairs, at department meetings, through the student senate. It's important to make sure that the students know what's happening in this process as well. And then, of course, you all, the board of trustees, to make sure that you guys know where we are at in this process. The co-chairs, Ruth and I, Dr. Tucker Miller, attended the middle states conference in December. So a lot of good information there about what I thought would be, to be honest with you, more heavily leaning towards middle states in how we go through this self-study process. And there was certainly some of that, some of those sessions, but there was also some good sessions on assessment as a whole, which of course, you know, it's the documentation and the evidence of our institution saying that, you know, we're meeting these standards. So that all comes through assessment. So that was an interesting few days in Philadelphia. Like I mentioned before, we're moving to the outlining and draft, drafting of chapters in the spring of 2024. In fact, we've asked for chapter outlines by Valentine's Day, February 14th, so they were all real pleased about that. Evidence inventory, so gathering this evidence and making this evidence accessible to our visiting team and to members of the campus community that might sit in on interviews or sessions with these, with these folks from the visiting team. We continue to, you know, evolve that evidence inventory. So again, we can have that accessible. We anticipate, the last time we did middle states, two years ago, we did two campus forums. We anticipate doing two campus forums again. So when we have, even if it's a first draft, getting that to the campus community and begin to get their feedback on where we're at, at that point. And visiting dates, visit dates will be selected in the coming months. And again, our visit is in spring 2025. So we'll start to nail down those dates about a year out. So just to recap, on the left-hand side, our goals for this past year, the year I'm reporting to you on now, continue review of the assessment process and suggest system improvements as needed. So in fact, there are some suggestions that are partially born out of the September 1st development day that we had, where faculty sat down and talked about assessment. So there's a couple of changes coming that, that the, that the campus will continue to, or the assessment committee will continue to work on in 2324. Revise the institutional learning outcomes, we did that. Of course, support the accreditation self-study process and continue to foster and maintain a strong culture of assessment on campus. This actually kind of goes hand in hand with reviewing the assessment process and changing if that's necessary. So this year, moving forward, going to continue the review of the assessment process. There, like I said, there's at least one change proposal that's on the table. I suspect there'll be a couple more as we start to look at some of these changes and how we could implement them. Like I mentioned earlier, gather assessment data on ILO1 so we can, so we can assess that in the coming year. Of course, continue to support accreditation and continue to maintain that culture of assessment that, that we've taken years now to build up on, on this campus. That is my report. I'm happy to take any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you, Cardi. Do I understand only offer Spanish in the one or not?
So all of those classes, separate one are in the high school. So yeah, they would, they would be, yeah, and there is a French session. There was, there was one. So those are college in the high school.
College, you don't have it here.
We do have a couple adjuncts that teach classes.
They do have Spanish one.
The Spanish one too, okay. Because sometimes people ask me and I don't know, one about the language, the other thing about the music. We don't have any music department, do we?
We do not.
No.
So I think those were a few things as the years have gone, and this is just me speaking as a member of the campus community, unless as the assessment chair. But I think as the years have gone by, some of these, we had years where we didn't have these at all. So these have actually just come back in, in, in the recent year or maybe two, right? So yeah, there was absolutely a time where we did not have those and students were asking for those types of courses.
Sometimes community approach, yes, perhaps. And my second question, it's a really quick, would you be kind to send your other point to us, please?
Of course, of course.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Other, other question? Okay?
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan.
So for those of you who are, we ultimately did not have more of the case, but this needs to be a reminder that a trustee is able to handle this business. So let's, let's move to an informational thing. And that will stay in your packets again, are the, that it's from the October 19th. And I need to ask someone to sponsor a motion to, to, to trustee, as we thought of, by and, you know, any discussion corrections? On paper, opposed, abstained, motion carries. Also have informational minutes from our November meeting. I have to see your solo sponsor motion, formal, second by justice, yeah, but discussion on paper. Opposed, abstained, she carries. Move on to the president's report, so the chairman of the department report.
I just have a couple of things that I want to share with you. We've been talking about advocacy and that has been the focus of our efforts as we've had a couple of presidents meetings since we last met. And our focus has been on the upcoming advocacy for the New York State budget. And I shared this with you previously, it's been tweaked a little bit and I will share this out with you after the meeting as well. NYCCT and the presidents have two different approaches to advocacy because the chancellor essentially told us that we couldn't go the direction that we wanted to. And I'll share with you, if you haven't seen what NYCCT is doing. What we're asking for as presidents is $97 million in additional operating aid to support community colleges. So that's not $97 million for us, that would be awesome. But it's $97 million for all community colleges. And, and they came up with that by basically taking the gap between what the counties provide and what the state provides and asking the state to come up to the same level of support as the counts. So as you all know, you know, the, the history behind the funding formula is supposed to be that we're a third, a third, a third. That's been way out of, way, way out of whack for forever. And, you know, the counties actually are ahead of where the state are in terms of proportion of support. The students barely, the lion shared the bird. And this institution, it's something like 52% of our revenue comes from students. So it's, you know, a third, a third, a third is out the window. So what we're asking for, because we originally talked about equity with the state-operated campuses, not necessarily becoming equal with the state-operated campuses. But I'm going to show you a slide in a minute that shows the gross inequity between what the state-operated campuses are funded versus us. What we're saying is, you know, we want the state to own up to their share of supporting community colleges. And that's where the $97 million comes from. And in return for that, we may, are making a pledge to basically do what we're doing, but do it better. And that is, you know, to make sure that we have 20,000 career-ready students every year, support the governor's economic development priorities. And, you know, again, things that we are going to do, deliver a skilled workforce and boost our workforce and economic development. Really trying to tap into what the, the governor has, has set forth as her agenda for workforce development. And really what we do, no matter what we call it, is workforce development. So that's our ask. The sense that we get is it's going to be a footnote on, on the state university's sheet of what they, they move forward, which is not unusual. What we are at, what we are, as presidents, asking our local business leaders to do, is we've drafted a letter of support that we want them to send to the governor and to the, to the assembly and to the senate, basically supporting this, this effort, just to try to drum up some, some additional noise, if you will, about that. So what NYCCT is doing is, whoops, right back to where I was. Here, so NYCT is, is talking about equity and funding in comparison to the state-operated campuses. It's, it's a different story, but it's quite dramatic. So the direct tax support, which includes the state support, all the tax support for state-operated campuses, 19,000 per student for community colleges, it's by the order of $92. Just to highlight this a little bit more, to show that we are, you know, the proportion of students that we have that are at some form of disadvantage, whether that's economically disadvantaged or underrepresented populations, you know, we serve many more of those students and those, those populations tend to be more resource intensive. And you see that we do it now at dramatically less, with dramatically less tax support than, than our friends at the state-operated colleges. You can see why the chancellor doesn't want to move this forward because it's pitting two of his sectors against each other. And, and so I understand that. And NYCCT has considered his remark, they did meet with the chancellor at their recent meeting. They had a rich discussion about it and ultimately the, the community college trustee said, yeah, we hear you chancellor, but we're still moving forward with our message that we're not asking for $19,000 per student. We're asking for consideration to increase this to a more reasonable and more equitable level than what our state-operated campuses are doing. Because, you know, there is than what our state operated campuses are doing. Because, you know, there is, you, you have to acknowledge there is more expense required at a, a state operated campus or a research university or something like that. They also have other shifts of revenue. But this is pretty stark in terms of, of the difference between the two. So.
They want to uh invest in the community college because that seems to be the most affordable for the community.
You're, you know, that, that is the message that we want to get forward. It just doesn't seem to get any traction, at least with the state university. So that's why the trustees.
Good statistics as far as four-year degrees as opposed to two-year degrees and, and the students now coming out of high school and just going into the workforce. What's the breakdown of the three, you know, three silos?
Well, I, I can't give you direct, you know, I can't give you exact quotes right now of, of those numbers, but you will see that, you know, in this case, you had slightly more students going into the state operated sector. So you had two hundred and nine thousand versus one hundred and seventy four thousand going into the community college sector. Historically, we, the community college sector has had the majority of the students. There's been a shift and so that shift can be explained by, uh, you know, the Excelsior Scholarship. Some of that shift can be just explained by the, the capacity in the system because you have fewer people going to college. You have, there are fewer people, number one, of college age, but there are a few people going to college. And, you know, the, the, the shrinking gap between our tuition, the state operated tuition, and, you know, the Excelsior Scholarship, which, which provides a pathway to, you know, a four-year school. So where we, we once upon a time competed heavily just with community colleges, now we're competing with four-year schools as well because there are, there is that capacity. And you see that shift. So we're no longer the majority uh sector in terms of enrollment. That hasn't, this is two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two data. That hasn't changed this year either. We're still slightly less, but but it's, it's roughly, you know, it's forty-nine percent versus fifty-one percent. So. Anyway, I, I wanted you to be aware that I'm guessing that you might have seen this from NYCT. I don't know if you've seen what, what the presidents had put out. I know we talked about it last time and they, and they have tweaked that. Uh, we've had, our, our group has had meetings, as I said, with the chancellor. He is um, he's willing to, to essentially allow us to, to do our own advocacy, but he's not really pledged to support our effort. So that's, at least he's honest. I mean, in the past, we've had chancellors who gave us lip service and said, yeah, 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 we're, we're right there with you. And, and then, you know, and through the negotiations with the governor's office and, and the legislature and he is, and you, you know, it just evaporates at that point. And so you feel like, you know, the rug was pulled out from underneath you. I guess this way you know going in that where, where his head is at and where his, his efforts are. So, you know, I, I know that many of you have connections with, with our state legislators. You know, please use, uh, uh, again, I'll send this out, use those talking points if you have the opportunity and, you know, we'll see if we can get some traction.
Okay.
Of course.
And we're, it's not like we're asking to take money from the state operated campuses. We're just asking for more. It's like when, when the legislature talks about school district funding. You know, or we know that there are districts that are wealthier districts that get more aid. We're never saying take money from them. We're saying invest more in the lowest funded sector of, of districts in the state. So, you know, we're not trying to take anything away from the other campuses. We're just looking for more of an, an investment in our state colleges.
And it's going to be an uphill battle, no matter what strategy is applied. The, the division of budget is, you know, projecting significant deficits in, in the billions of dollars in, in the next couple of years. They have essentially built into their financial model level funding for the state university, which sounds great. And it is, it is better than, than planning to cut. But as we know, every year our expenses rise and if you're going to give us the same dollar, that same dollar doesn't go as far as it did the year before. So, you know, you, you're absolutely right. We need the additional funding. Whether or not we're going to get anywhere with it is, is the question. So on a happier note, uh, we wanna, we had, uh, I, I sent out the link. Um, and I want to acknowledge, you know, the, the, we had Channel Ten here the other, yesterday, two days ago. To talk about our Title III grant, even though you've known about it for several months, the governor had essentially embargoed any sort of announcement on that until she released the information. So that, that went out and uh, last, late last week, Channel Ten picked up on that. They were on campus, interviewed Scott and Dan Fogarty. And uh, so they, they did a nice job of, of communicating the grant. And uh, and we had a couple of students that, that were there to, to represent as well. So that was, that was nice. And then the final thing that I want to talk about in this report is just to share a little holiday cheer. I'll, I'll credit Dan Fogarty and, and his crew for holiday message that they put out. That is my report, manager.
Included in your package, so to disturb you on your own time, is the scholarship family report. And I will add. Um, good day everyone. I have also attending. So that's an increase from the hospital this September. So for us. Um, we also got from the Sony S A conference back in November. Uh, we help appointed a student like me and same committee. And we ran elections for the second term in the sixth quarter for spring twenty twenty-four. So Brady knows that we have a whole board for, for next semester, twenty twenty-three. February. And trustee, that's my thank you.
We do thank everybody. I'm going to start by, um, before I was meant to address, I was stranger to this uh facility or this college. Anyway, I'm going to start by uh the report with the annual agreement, which it was sent December eighth, offshore all of the day. If you didn't receive it, please um get in touch with the foundation office. Then they can put your, put your name in there. And this, and uh, so far we, uh, they raised ten thousand dollars. This is going to be designated for the uh multi-service term athletic field. And uh, you know, whatever they raise, I say is going to change. Next time you, and uh, giving Tuesday, which is the uh global generosity movement. Uh unleash, unleashing the power of their people and organize, organization to transform their community and the world and um our foundation is this year, the second year they're participating. And they raised seven thousand thirty-five dollars. This as well is going to be designated for the uh field as well. We know that uh foundation owned one hundred fifty-five acres land. Uh, which is on the corner of sixty-seven and um second dog uh road as well as the uh yes, thank you. And uh, is a, you know, somebody's interested, they're still negotiating. That foundation sent a proposal regarding the uh multi-purpose turf equity. Uh, you know, uh, to the office of the Senator Gillibrand and Senator Gillibrand on our behalf. And forwarded to the Senate appropriation committee. We are waiting to hear from them. The month is that they have five weeks, the fifth Friday, we have, the foundation have different uh topic for the community and they invite some people to uh inform people about different subjects. But this time it's going to fail until March twenty-nine, which is Wednesday with the, with Friday. And they are not going to have this Friday. And they're going to, uh, they're going to do something different on March sixth, which is Wednesday. They are going to have a program, uh, essential uh concept for not for uh profit. And if you want a, at the presenter, this attorney, um, Costello, Costello. And uh, if you're interested to attend, please RSVP to the foundation. And or you can go online and reserve. It's going to be in a March sixth freezer room. In the morning, complimentary breakfast will be served. And it's going to be in the third. I think uh the prologue gathering, uh, the opening, uh, we had different artists, which was uh, you know, she didn't make it. And now Alexandria Higgins, uh, it, it, it's going to come and show his, her work. Uh, January twenty-fourth is going to be their opening reception and to open and receive. It's going to be open January twenty-fourth. And then uh, the reception is going to be February second. Am I right? Yes, yes. And uh, before I conclude my report, I want to appreciate it would be Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. If there's no question, I conclude my report. Thank you.
Uh, Chesley, I'll see her. I'll present the, it's going to be our fourth time. Okay. Uh, two graphs are presented, one that provides expense budget data by the mature function and the others that provides expense budget data by the contract service adding order. The graphs compared data from fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Also included for expense summary budget versus actual, September first. Twenty-five percent of our fiscal year, uh, so the fastest about this detailed about requirements, detailed comparison of our expenses to budget for the period nine, one to eleven thirty. Also included was the finance team, which covered from nine, one to thirty-one. Seventeen percent of the fiscal year, that fuel revenue on the building activity all will be up until April thirty-first, which included fall twenty-three, winter twenty-four, summer straight up to four. It represents seventy-six point four percent of our tuition budget while expenses incurred for section months by twelve point four percent of budget. Um, there were three other items, budget transfers, contracts, grants across. In regards to student accounts and financial aid, um, to support home for, for willing. Financial aid is um recording that we've seen one thousand access for the one to twenty-four at the end of the year, it's a four and sixty point two million dollars. And federal, state and institutional financial aid, we reported about twenty-three thousand dollars in bogus scholarships for college high school students for the fall twenty-three. Um, twenty-four, twenty-five VASPA will be available December thirty-first, um, financially. Instead of spring. Um, to kind of work with the local high schools, helps parents with the process. We do have a board motion on for a budget transfer. There's one budget transfer as this relates to full-time salaries, sponsoring, better line staff, I expect. Trustees approves all budget transfers between budgetary departments, both seen five thousand dollars in all transactions that I posted salary accounts. Budget transfers arising from rather budgets, wanting to cover expenses, this budget transfer can find to cover expenses related to staff salaries. So would anyone sponsor that motion? Um, any session that, if the line items are in your packets, any session option? All paper. Same motion heading. Uh, buildings, grounds, trustee, I'm
sure. Which is um here. Here, here. Network video recorder, state yard software has also been installed. Network room air conditioning, all equipment for the big air conditioning, large server room has backseat and contract. Almost got it. Fire it up. Alright, cool. And but there's no questions that puts a report.
You have a question. How?
No question.
How long does the recorded recording work?
So if it's continuously running and we have a retention policy of thirty days. Also, the AI software that we have it should explain. Standing time for from thirty days to something else. And so what?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to highlight a couple of the items that are in your package that C D N A is actually made up base. One piece is that we were granted an extension request from the New York State Office of People with Developmental Disabilities to continue through December twenty-five, to continue our work and training direct support professionals. So we're going to be able to extend access and train a bunch more folks. Uh, and there's a great need for that community. So we're very pleased about that. Uh, second following our October fall internship here, and this is workforce development related again. Uh, we've successfully placed and registered uh, at least twelve students in accredited internship in a variety of different majors that the college offers. We expect there'll be more to follow in the early mix of January. So we're very pleased about that as well. And we've also developed a new individual study certificate uh with a focus on American Sign Language teacher assistance. And there's a great need for those folks in our community. These are folks that can uh learn American Sign Language and go into the classroom. These are folks that can learn American Sign Language and go into classrooms to, to assist teachers with deaf students. So we're very pleased to offer that. Then finally, we've installed some iFlex. And I know the, I'm guessing the trustees have been formed about. Now add that in our behavioral health classroom, which is from C213. And we have a lot of confidence that as we become more familiar with iFlex technology and instructional strategy, that's going to allow us to extend access to students, not only in behavioral sciences, but other areas of the college that we wouldn't be able to serve otherwise. We're very pleased about that. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Trustee, okay, or is that the next student affairs? We should always have a full report. So the full report, that would be a choice, but these are something I, so two students in the winter track, up on springtime. So that is great news for the moment, I mean, that was seven student affairs mission have been very busy. With their outreach assistance, continuing success workshops and holiday events, and that's their goal. In particular, the BOB trio coordinated with the domestic violence unit in the counseling center to chat at the beginning of the holiday. We intrigued the inner space in the comments and status. Great job in this deal. Furthermore, CSET and SET programs collaborated together in several educational activities and field trips, including the same house cavern and the Center for Agricultural and Natural Resources at the Polesville. And finally, our meeting, the women partnerships programs that help them exercise their borders were there were any suspence, then they raised over $500. Astridian High School, L, L, that, that program. Holiday celebrations at Astridian High School and High School are underway this year. Great, and same with you. Diversity, I put you on one without.
My favorite day of the year, another day length increases. Looking out the window. So, um, as usually I have a list of events that occurred here in some of the upcoming dates. Elements of state inclusion, social justice here. A couple of things I just want to highlight is the Alliance Club here. I think it's really working out well and very small membership there at this point, which is good to see. Which really supports creating a safe and welcoming environment for people. Let's see, we did a clothing swap and you may have asked, what, what is that? Where that relates to, what's termed structural violence in the holiday. This case, so any opportunity that people can have to come in and get the clothes they need from here is important. An arcane training would be really nice to see too, and also the OBD epidemic, right? On that this point.
Oh, yes. Fun note, Think Peace Club were distributing our annual quote a day calendar. So what happens, I have students to quote, extort them, kind of points first to credit. Basically, and see, there's psychology behind this too, because you get into this, you, you know, people who, when you say, how are you, they say, same, crap, different. That really sets up your brain function certain way. It's just a neurobiological response. Sets some different quotes, set the tone of the day. And we've actually broken it down into, come on, it's our American history month, this history month. Asian American Pacific Islander Month, which is very good, Pride Month, Native American History Month, Hispanic History Month. So done a nice job on that. So that's one contribution to. Diversity here, pretend all of YouTube impacted, we could include ourselves, not toxic. Let's see, oh. This climate survey to determine what the needs and relations of diversity and the inclusion is going to come. And I'll talk about that a little bit part of the time. Speak the other CEOs a bit more. I just want to share some of the assignments that we've been doing in sociology, human rights and also diversity. This is important because what they are asked to do is volunteer to work with the organization out there. They have an opportunity to period practice. Actually works pretty well for them. So not only do they have an opportunity to get information, they have to go out there and apply it. Let's see, oh, I know these guys, I usually have like 20 students, if I get lucky, like 36. And that I put in place in 2011 and early focuses on structural violence. So this was in place, SUNY started to put an adversity curriculum, but we've been on this for a while here. Oh, and I can't say something about this one. You may be aware of what went on with the congressional hearing in Penn State, MIT and Harvard. Yes, and Harvard. And, you know, this really speaks, I know, difficult bit is to talk about these issues. And it's one of the reasons I incorporated the stability guidelines in all my classes. The national communication guidelines in some of the upper level classes. Because we really need to learn to speak to each other. And it really brings up the issue of freedom of speech, what you can say, what you can't say. It sits with the student code. What is it? How do we speak to each other here? And I think more and more that it's something that we are really unique folks have, has kind of continued about. I think we, as we approach our election here, on our formals. Uh, let's see.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mary Jo Davis, as correct to my last time, constantly and testing as of summer eight. Christina has moved from Senior Computer Services Coordinator to Director of Institutional Research. Vacancy searches for the fall of 2024, nursing faculty, full-time, searching in progress. LVP Coordinator, full-time, grant-funded, final stages. Coordinator of retention, full-time, grant-funded, final stages. LVP Coordinator, or Counselor rather, full-time, grant-funded, search in progress. Nursing lab coordinator, full-time, grant-funded, search in progress. Senior Computer Service Coordinator, full-time, search in progress. And Director of Advertising, Counseling and Testing, full-time on the horizon. One thing I don't see in here and that whether I can enlighten you is that we replace all the part-time security guards. We're still searching for those. We, we are, we've had a full rotation. For fall, we are that person that resides and that one was sitting in the stair every day. Okay. Schedule for place that's, but, but we, yeah, okay. So there, there is a progress, search progress? Yes, okay. And that conclude my report, Madam Chair. And I can just supplement, almost all of the searches that convention, we concluded. It's like, sense of, of all, but just read those on the list, so. Have a good week.
You're hitting your statement. Is there any other thing I'm going for, I'm bored. Can you stop it? It's emotional, Judge. But, but trustee, are you still in a position?
So that's going to be.